Alrighty, let's call this meeting ordered. Please try us from flags, please.
Aye, blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, number three, any citizen desiring to be heard. Here in that, number four, consideration of possible action on proven minutes for December 15th, 2017.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Hey, but the plats should go there.
I'm gonna stand here and act like you know what I'm doing. Let's see how long this lasts.
Number five, consideration of possible action on proven final plat of Guthrie Goodwill, southeast quarter, eight sixteen, north two west.
Just as a little background, commissioners, this is the area that the Goodwill was built in the city of Guthrie, so this is actually a plat that's not gonna be out in your purview of the unincorporated area of the county. They combined some lots that was on the existing plat for the area that the Goodwill covers, so this is adjusting for the combination of those lots.
Is this for the old hamburger shop, is that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's a road crossing, I'm just moving it out of the way.
Oh. Yeah, that Harvey's sit right here, and then there was an alley behind it, and some residential properties and some residential properties, and then we vacated through District Court, we vacated the alley, but kept the electric easement, and then we're just combining the lots now that we have a single building sitting on it.
Good. Any discussion?
And I'm here because they have to approve for you to sign, right? Is that the problem?
They will, providing that they approve of it, they're gonna sign it, and then I'll attest it, and then you will leave here and go to the county clerk's office and file it, and then when they are done filing it there, they're gonna give you a Mylar back that you'll take down wherever, usually it's Triangle A and E because that's who can do one this big.
Yes.
They're gonna bring that down to a legal size, and you'll bring the Mylar and the legal back to the clerk.
Awesome. There's that.
Without objection, I propose we approve the final plat of Goodwill.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
And I want his signature, I think, three times, right?
All three of those copies, so they're gonna sign it.
Thank you.
And I told the other gentleman that brought it in for us to look at, the paper copy you all will keep, we're gonna get the two Mylars.
Yeah, that gentleman is my brother-in-law.
Okay.
Who's traveling and asked me to do this for him.
Okay.
So he says, he tells me yesterday morning, I need you to go up to the city of Guthrie for their council meeting at 9:00 AM. Like, I didn't deer hunt yesterday, I got a perfect deer coming in and I didn't go, and I came up here yesterday morning with City of Guthrie, and as you know, that wasn't where I was supposed to be. That's what happens when you hire family.
Okay, so let me help you out here.
Yes, ma'am.
County clerk's office, go across street, up the stairs to the courthouse, go through security, it's gonna be the last door on the left. They will record it, they will take your menu.
Yep.
And then hand you the one back that you take and get the copy of.
Okay. Awesome.
Got it.
You need to know what that first one, right?
It wasn't.
After the one back here.
If I can give you a tip, do whatever lady asks you to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything fits me.
I'm well-trained there. I know Hardee's used to have biscuits and gravy, you remember the biscuits and gravy?
Yeah, you can go out to Carl's Jr. and get them now.
Okay.
Yeah, they're the same.
Oh, is it same deal?
They had friggin' hamburger too.
Yeah. Charcoal.
That's exactly right. They had one of them little places outside the gate at Cherry Point, North Carolina, when I stationed out there. That's where I'd lived, when I was off duty at Hardee's. Of course, that's back when they put real tomatoes on hamburgers.
And the hamburgers probably beef back then, too.
It was, yeah, most were.
I'm sure they make beef burger anymore there.
Good parts, there's some of the beef parts, I think.
Ready for your next step.
Okay, I appreciate you guys.
There's some beef in it.
I'm gonna excuse myself, thank you so much.
Number six, consideration of possible action on proven agreement with Tiger Commissary. Sheriff, is this you?
Yes, sir.
Is this something you want?
Yes, sir. As we spoke in the last meeting, we agreed to, the board agreed to allow me to terminate services with Paramore, who's our current kitchen commissary provider. Through this last year, we had an opportunity to kind of evaluate their ability to meet our needs and expectations, and came up short several times, so we're, we visited with Tiger as well as some other vendors, and we believe that Tiger's gonna be the best to meet our needs and expectations, and provide us with a lot more than what we currently have for a very minute price increase premium.
Alrighty, I'll move with approve, second. Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Seven, consideration of possible action on proven commissary service agreement with Tiger.
Yeah, basically, you've got two modules here, you've got the food preparation for the kitchen, and you also have the commissary. So you've got essentially two separate services that were put into one agreement, but I think the board needs approval, or we need approval on both of those.
Yeah, I'll move with approve, so, and I know you and I talked about this, that these two different can conflict with one another, right?
Sure, yes.
Because the commissary can sell more commissary items if they short people on food, and I know you're gonna look after that, make sure that doesn't happen.
You know, I go back pretty frequently to the kitchen, almost daily, and see some of the meals that are being prepared. I've actually eaten some of those meals back there, just to make sure that the food's available, I can say I've eaten it. Looking at Tiger's menu and calories set forth by the state and stuff, on what the, the allotted number of calories are, and another thing that Tiger does is they serve milk with their meal, which is our current provider, they, you get a flavor packet to put in your water. And with a lot of those guys that are stuck in there, they don't get the vitamin D, and some things that are kind of inherited to sustain the health, Tiger does provide that stuff. And, you know, the commissary, the way that they do it is it's online commissary, there's no storage of commissary on site, so we don't have to worry about the flooding of the commissary and stuff like that, it's all shipped in like once a week or twice a week.
Uh, yeah, once a week typically, and as far as the calories, we provide above the minimum. I think we expect a 2,800 calorie menu.
Well, it's never been a problem that I know of in Logan County, especially since Sheriff DeRoz has been here, but I do know of some county jails and some facilities where the commissary and the food service is run by the same company, and the meals suffer so they drive sales on their commissary products, and I just, we don't wanna get into that kind of a conflict.
Right, we make a point, we guarantee that you'll have more calories than the minimum requirement, and that covers that, and the offer will still order on top of that, but that's kind of them.
And like I said, we monitor that, that's one of the reasons that we're switching to a different company is because we feel that there's some oversight in meal prep that should've been a little better quality and more substance there, so we're trying to maybe some of that.
Good job, Sheriff.
Alright, thank you.
Do we vote on this?
No, I need a second.
Say.
No, you made the motion.
I made the motion, alright, now say.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight, consideration of possible action on proven bid, 2018-11 for asphalt product paperwork, December 15th, 2017.
I actually wrote my list today.
I did not, y'all bet.
I did.
I do have a conflict, I mean, I'm not, I got a problem, it is, uh, on crushed asphalt, you'll see TJ Campbell bid, crushed asphalt delivered, but they failed the bid, crushed asphalt picked up at the plant.
Right.
I personally think that it's a sole source item, because I don't think Atlas and them, I don't think they understand what we call crushed asphalt. I think they're bidding milled asphalt, and we like crushed asphalt.
Well, I, I mean, I tend to agree with you, because TJ Campbell put milled asphalt here, bid 3950 here, in zone, my zone four, and Atlas Products also bid the same price per ton for crushed asphalt, so I think you're right. Now, so, I, I don't have a problem with the bid that Campbell put in for delivered crushed asphalt,
Yeah, I'm good with that.
There's no, what do they charge us for pick it up?
Well, I called down and asked him if there's a reason why they didn't bid it, because they got through and put no bid on it. He said, "No, I don't know what I was thinking." He said, "If you would, just write in 1395." I said, "No, it don't work that way, I can't do that." But, uh, I don't know whether to not accept that bid and rebid the crushed asphalt, or how y'all wanna handle that, but I pick it up pretty much daily.
Do we need to remit it?
So, so let me ask you a question.
Do you buy more than $15,000 worth of, in a six month period? So we need to remit it, then if you need to go pick it up?
Isn't that at the county?
Yeah, I think that's.
It's $13,000.
It is county.
That's, yeah.
One of the things Monty and I spoke with, and I think that, and I haven't had a chance to with this week, we need to get clarified with Atlas, that they're bidding actual milled and not crushed, and that there is the difference between the two products. There's a couple different ways I think you can go here, because we know TJ Campbell for truly crushed asphalt can beat the price of Atlas. The problem that I see is, I don't think to Atlas, it's apples to apples. I don't think that, that what they're bidding as crushed is what we call crushed, I think it's all milled on their part. So, the law allows this board to pick and choose from bids, reject any and all, reject some, pick them apart. So it really becomes an option of whether this board wants to accept it as submitted or to pull out and award maybe for all the hot mixes, and not the crushed and not the milled, until we get clarification from our vendor.
Can we do this? Can we accept crushed asphalt delivered as a bid, however, go back and rebid it to be picked up?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's an option. I'm not sure, I, here's what I suspect with TJ Campbell and the way they submitted this bid, I think that they may not do pickup for crushed asphalt at all locations, but they'll deliver from any, and I think whoever did up the bid failed to realize that the Waterloo Plant carries crushed asphalt on site to be picked up. I think that might've been what led to this no bid on the pickup. But yes, I think you could, I think you could award for everything except pickup of crushed asphalt, you're well within your rights as a board to do so.
Okay. Let's do that?
I'm good with that.
Alright, I'll get that.
So, we can make it clear, just, the board then will reject all bids for the pickup of crushed asphalt, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, and that would be Logan County Asphalt and Atlas, because TJ and Haskell put a no bid in on that.
But for pickup only, okay.
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure my notes are.
So.
Alright.
So we're gonna rebid, uh, crushed asphalt being picked up at plants?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna award it to. You want to award regular asphalt products?
So do we want to start with District One?
That's what I was gonna recommend.
District One, asphalt pickup, let's start there.
Asphalt pickup, okay. Let me get back to my other sheet here. Uh, that would be Haskell Lemon across the board. A, B, and C.
Okay, and delivery?
Delivery gets a little more complicated.
Okay.
Uh, delivery on crushed asphalt will be TJ Campbell on Zone One, excuse me.
Oh, you're gonna split up, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, boy, alright, let me get. You're not supposed to make it that dove.
I'm sorry.
Alright, so for delivery of crushed asphalt in Zone One.
Actually, Zone One, Two, Three, and Four is all the same as TJ Campbell.
TJ Campbell, okay.
At 18, between 1810 and 1895, depending on the zone.
Okay, and so now we have delivery, are you separating out your hot mix types on your delivery?
I am, uh, for, uh, Zones One, Two, Three, and Four are all the same for Type A and Type B.
Okay, so delivery of A and B zones, One through Four goes to?
Atlas.
So that would leave C going to?
Uh, Type C goes to Haskell Lemon, except for Zone Four, which is also Atlas.
Zone One through Three to Haskell Lemon for Type C. Type C Zone Four goes to Atlas.
Yes.
Alright.
I'm done.
District Two?
Well, crushed asphalt. I got mine.
Delivered to you.
Okay, asphalt's a little different for us. When we pick up, it's always Type B, and, so the cheapest on that is, is Atlas. So we'll take Atlas, uh, pickup, just a little bit cheaper. And, uh, also on the B mix, they're also the cheapest for delivered.
Okay, so let me back up a minute. Are you saying that you're only awarding Type B, or is it gonna be all types available, you're going with Atlas?
Uh, we'll go with all types, yeah.
Okay, so, and on delivery, the same?
Yes.
Alright, D Three?
Well, I'm gonna do Atlas straight across the board.
And crushed, delivered, TJ Campbell?
Yeah, that's right.
And asphalt is Atlas, you said?
Yep.
For pickup and delivery, all type?
Mm-hmm, but, my thing is, is this lawful, I mean, which I think it is, let's say I got a two or three mile project that I'm gonna do, if I call and get a price on state contract, and it beats the bid price that we currently have, I can go with my state contract? So, with that said, I wanna go with Atlas paving, and, but I will check state contract, you know, before I purchase it.
Okay. So, to make this clear, because we're gonna need a motion, and I'm gonna say this, then someone can claim the motion. District One, we had crushed asphalt delivered all four zones, TJ Campbell. Type A and B mix delivered to Zones One through Four, Atlas. Type C mix delivered Zones One through Three, Haskell. Type C mix, Zone Four, Atlas. District Two, crushed asphalt delivered, TJ Campbell. Pickup and delivery, all zones, Atlas. District Three, crushed asphalt delivered, TJ Campbell. All types, pickup and delivery, hot mix, Atlas. So.
So move. Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Before we move on, just let me give you a quick update. As you know, we rejected two bids to go back out, which was for rock and for coal patch. I was hoping that we would have them for January 2nd, they will not, they're gonna open on the 12th.
Did you have a question for us? I mean, you come back for some reason.
I missed a signature, they asked me to come back, sorry.
That's heaven.
Sorry about that.
It could be our platinum surveyor did it different than what you're accustomed to, that there's actual, this was in a test that you did, thankfully.
Well, they usually do this when they record it, so you must've got one of my new ones.
Sorry about that, she said, "You need to run back over there."
And bother them some more.
I don't like that.
In my order, I'm gonna get bothered.
Thank you, John, wouldn't it?
She's doing what she's supposed to do.
We don't know what to go.
Also, thanks for the aggravation, waiting.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
We just worked so slow.
I told her, "Now, you don't want me to run back over there and get that stamp when I come back," and she said, "No, I can do that one."
Yeah.
So I just confirmed with you.
Yeah.
Awesome. Sorry to interrupt your meeting.
Oh, you're good, I apologize.
No, no, I appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, you guys, love.
Same to you. Number nine, consideration of possible action on proven resolution accepted 400 feet donation from Michael Manidge, District Two.
Yeah, I made that motion, that's, what are your constituents?
Well, what's he been donating to you then?
Because he bought a horn from us, and we stuck it in for you, there in District Three, on that north side of Doacy Road.
That's our. Motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number 10, consideration of possible action on proven resolution accepted a donation of one 2,005 GMC Sierra from Marvin Goodman to District Two, I mean, Three.
So, to District.
Two, two, I heard you first time.
Damon, that's that orange GMC, so the next time you see it, it'll probably be a county person driving it, not me, so you can.
I'll put it on that one.
I'll move with approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. That truck's kinda hard to spot.
I know.
Just a reminder, we need to get the title, I need the VIN number on of it.
Okay, Cassidy's got the title. Bring it up for me.
Eleven, consideration of possible action on knowledge and receipt of notice of tort claim from Paula Norwood Owen, afford to Hacko County Claim. I'll move with knowledge. One second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Twelve, consideration of possible action. We got any on twelve?
I do have one up for twelve.
Requisitioning officers and various accounts.
Well, that's yours, by the way.
Thank you. Didn't we get a motion on requisition?
No.
I'll move with approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
None on thirteen.
No action on thirteen. Fourteen, consideration of possible action on proven following permanent road crossing permits.
Your contracts have to be signed by the DA.
Okay.
The soonest I'll be able to get them there, providing what's available, is going to be Tuesday afternoon.
Okay.
Whenever, if I can get it scheduled with him. Um, so as soon as I, I get that, then we'll get a copy back to the sheriff's office.
Well, he has to sign the side of it.
Well, you wanna do that while you're here, and then that way, uh, when I get the DA's signature on it, it'll be all good.
And then you get your copy.
Yes, sir. Damon, I think you had signed it.
Yeah, I signed it.
And I will try to get Lowell Tuesday afternoon.
Lowell has reviewed this already, you just.
But he's gotta sign it.
Okay, okay, I didn't see that on there.
Yeah. He usually doesn't till we've, and then I run over to him, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve of following that permanent road crossing permits.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Fifteen, consideration of possible action on consent, agenda ideas.
Hey, Roll. Blankets.
New blankets this time of year, it's pretty cold.
My five-year-old granddaughter saw a horse with horse blankets on, and saw another one next to it, it had a blanket, and she was all upset.
Just ain't fair.
It is, I think, fair. Four horses from that size have a blanket. Hey, Monty, did the repair folks say, when they thought they might have a double drum fixed?
You know, they haven't said, but the first time I talked to him, he allowed them to take them away. Ball though? Yeah.
Well, I don't know, they thought it's stay away from balls.
I don't think it was the brand.
I mean, I don't know.
I've never had any left with them.
I don't know, I mean, we had it where it worked, but, uh, it was a little engineering to get it there, and they finally got the correct part in, so I thought, you know, during the cold months, we'd get it down there and hopefully.
Get it fixed.
Hopefully it'll work like it should. Hopefully it'll work like it should.
Yeah, we already sit there locking up the arm. My way out.
Again, when it's working like it should, I really like it.
Yeah, I believe you. Thought that seemed six dollars per second, that was.
I guarantee that it'd be six dollars.
All those from the sheriff?
Can't buy nothing for six dollars.
Sprinkles.
Donuts sprinkles.
Donuts.
Oh.
Heavy? Uh, they're more expensive than that.
Depends on what you get, what size they are.
Doesn't.
You don't get no donuts for sheriff's department for six dollars. Well, we buy the light ones.
Hang on, we're not pretty sure. That's it. Donut holes. You can get a bag of doughnut holes for six dollars.
That's really all you need.
About the sheriff needs six dollars for my sale.
There you go.
Only on Fridays, weekdays, Fridays.
There you go. Just gotta make sure they're fit for consumption, isn't it?
I know my donuts.
That's that, right.
We're not done.
Oh, we're not done.
Monty, this is the election board claiming for you to sign there and then alcoholic betis checks.
Oh, yeah.
Weren't we supposed to have some sort of a election for the fair board?
We will.
Yeah, for sure.
The, the filing period, I'll make that another announcement. The filing period is Janu, the week of January the eighth from eight to four thirty to file your documents in the county clerk's office. The election will be held February the second, beginning at seven thirty AM, lasting till three o'clock PM at each district barn.
Thanks for the update, Troy.
Our beer beverage.
Yep.
Sixteen grand.
City of Gethin.
Per month.
Yes. Eleven thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars credits, fifteen hundred dollars. Small bowl, two forty-nine. I think it's due to the water.
It gotta be.
Who's in that chair?
Gotta be. Came back to the water.
You can't drink the water. You gotta run.
Like you had running water this week.
What was that WC Fields used to say? Drunk about water. I never mind.
We're now done with consent.
Motion.
Cedar Valley, three hundred nineteen dollars.
Swallow golf balls, keep whacking your hands.
Burger night.
Forget that. Burger night.
Yeah.
I'll second Mike's motion on the consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Sixteen, consideration of possible action on proven claims, this payment.
Monty, would you hand these down to Marvin, please? Marvin, these are your blankets, not part of claims, that just need your signature. I didn't see they stuffed them in there till just a minute ago.
So you tipped your hat. You had a new employee? You got a new employee in?
Um, well, my last new one's been there two months.
Oh.
Yeah, I was saving up for comments to the board. I have two things to.
What else?
They're not bad things.
Yeah.
It's rough crowd today. Well, we jump on the sheriff all the time. We're very sure, sure.
Yeah, but before Damon started coming in, I mean, he gave me some relief because it used to be me.
I'm glad I can do that.
Knocked out.
Yeah, if I'm gonna take down somebody else's habit.
What always comes off? They're leaving someone else alone.
District three.
Hey, hey, hey.
I could've pointed that different horn.
Well, yeah, you can do that every day if you'd like. I was just trying to help out, you know, county clerk here, kinda take a little pressure off her.
I still have more than my life.
All of us do. Ooh, that's a fat one for District one. Eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Over. That's a whole bag.
What is that, a dozen? How much is a dozen?
I don't know. When's the last time you invited a dozen? Four, five, six thousand.
It's about, it's about a dozen, I would say. Five bucks. Palate. Get them cheaper.
I'll make a motion with prue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, any citizens, I want to be heard. Here and then. Oh, did you guys something? You wanna go on that or comment?
I don't care.
Questions? Well, just throw it out there.
Okay, so first off, so you all know that last week I received a thirty-one thousand dollar check from ODOT, which I couldn't believe what, why, huh? And after some, some research, it is a refund. Back in the day, and actually this happened in September of twenty-ten, the county wrote a hundred and twenty thousand dollar match deposit to ODOT for the construction of bridge over Spring Creek and over Cottonwood in District one.
Whoa.
Flash forward seven years later, they audited the account and saw that they owed us thirty-one thousand dollars.
Sweet.
So I went back and pulled, found the PO where we did all this. That was actually drawn from the CBRI account. So I have deposited the thirty-one thousand back into the CBRI account.
Sweet.
Uh, so that, that will help that going into next year. We might be able to turn it around on something. I just thought it was interesting. It took them seven years.
They're streaming like that.
However.
More than it was.
Well, that said, I did try to look back and see how many other match checks we may have issued to them, and we have issued two from District two. One was only five thousand. The other was ninety-five thousand on a bridge west of Meridian.
They must've been.
And that was done in fourteen, I think it was. So we may end up getting another refund back, but this just came like, you know, out of the sky.
They must be on the zerkadia audit cycle.
I, it, it, yeah, I, I had to go far enough back that, well, I'll tell you far enough back that those POs are no longer in our position because we only have to keep them for five years, so. I had other records to, to back up to locate, so. I, I, as they audit.
They come out every seven years.
Maybe you oughta knock that hell down now.
So.
We don't get them.
Uh, again, that money came from CBRI, so that's where it went back to. And, and those that ODOT on your match was out of CBRI, so anything will go back to that whenever they get to it. Number two is, um, today is the last day for our purchasing agent, Laura Payne. She is retiring. She has nineteen years of service floating county between the election board and county purchasing, and I want to thank her for all of her service. Um, Elaine McMullen has, uh, going to take her place. We've had Elaine working with Laura for the last two months, side by side, but she flies solo come Monday morning. Y'all take it easy on her. It's a hard job to learn. I think you all are aware, is purchasing has so many little bits and pieces, it's, it's tough to bring it in. But I do wanna acknowledge Laura and thank her for her service. We have a come and go reception from two to four over in the office, so y'all come get a piece of cake and a cup of punch and wish her well.
Laura's done a good job. She's been a great to work with.
She did a great job over at her election board, and then she came over to you. But, you know, she's, uh, many years of good service, very good service. Very reliable individual.
Yeah.
All right, any more comment for announcements by the board? Here and then, nineteen, consideration of possible action on adjournment, so we.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Happy New Year.